Let's go ahead and get our September 12, 2019 Town Council meeting started. Good crowd. It's always good to look out there. I'm gonna do my best, and so the council members are gonna make sure we talk into microphones so you can hear us out there. If there's ever time he can hear us, throw something at Jenny, please. So, let's do the first. Let's go and get the pledge allegiance. You know what? Let's do this. Deputy Jacobs, you mind standing up here and get us started right up here?
In the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, the general law, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And just so y'all know, that was a request from Lieutenant Paul. Deputy Jacobs, this is.
I can now only give volume to that a lot more.
Yep. And Lieutenant speaks, I'll listen, alright?
Happy to be here.
Alright, so let's go to the next item in the agenda approval. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, let me take adjustments. We can add an item for business items to discuss the Arts and Entertainment Districts.
So, we have a motion to add under Business Item. So, we have two items. So, there'll be a third item under Business Items, and that is discussion of the A and E District, Arts and Entertainment. Alright, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? So moved. Thank you so much. Roll call.
Here, man.
Here.
Say it again. Here.
Here.
Mr. Shaiel.
Here.
Mr. Compton.
Here.
Mr. Duss.
Here.
We have a lot to add at one of those.
I know.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Also, just so the audience knows, over there on the side, you see that little rod coming out. One of our goals was to allow our meetings to be live, either on social media, to broadcast it. So, we're still working on it. So, tonight mainly is going to be recorded, and then we'll upload it. But our goal is to make these meetings live, to allow residents that cannot make it, they'll plug in on social media or something of that nature. So, just so you know, it's right there, so behave tonight. Alright, let's move on to minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of August 8, 2019 Town Council meeting as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Well, now we get to have fun. Under our first scheduled appointment, it's one of the things that I wanted to do, and our council members wanted to do, was recognize our staff. You know, we do not have a very large staff, but we have a hard-working staff. And every time I, in my position, get to speak someplace, everybody comments how beautiful our town is, or something about our town. And I, about our, it doesn't matter. And I tell them all, "Thank you so much," but it's not me. It's the hard-working staff members that we have. And, you know, every single one of them goes above and beyond the call of duty on a regular basis. And, you know, they're doing amazing jobs. So, tonight, we get to recognize one that, say, I've never ever seen him without a smile on his face, ever. And I have not come across a resident in the town of North Beach that hasn't said the same thing. Mr. Isaac Harris started his employment with the town of North Beach on June 26, 1989. I'm not sure if Drew is born yet, but, um, I'm teasing. At the young age of 31, Mr. Harris is an integral part to the daily operations of the Department of Public Works. Isaac makes responsibility to bring the water meters along with maintenance and repairs on water meters and pits, and a lot more. You will continually see him around town checking water stations, water testing, maintaining old water systems, and stopping and talking and waving to residents. Whenever you see Isaac, he is always smiling. Mr. Harris' reliable hard-working and his reputation for going the extra mile to assist town residents is legendary. He really is. He's absolutely amazing what he does. Isaac Hulitz, and if that's his laugh, makes the day brighter in North Beach. I just want to congratulate Isaac on 30 years with the town of North Beach. We're so lucky to have him, and we look forward to another 30 years. I want to thank you very much. Isaac, come on up here. Sorry, he just can't sit down. So, now, this was supposed to take place in August, but Isaac had to step up and take care of a family member, which is Isaac. So, back in August, we had his name, his recognition on the sign. And through years, we have picture after picture of Isaac. He's always smiling. He's always helping. He's always doing what we expect from Isaac. Here's a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented as recognition for your outstanding service and commitment to the town of North Beach, 1989 to 2019. The town of North Beach thanks you for your dedication. Thank you so much. This is a 30-year pin that he can place on his lapel to show his dedication to our town and our dedication to you. And lastly, it's just a way of us saying thank you for your service. I like that part.
You don't have to say anything.
Yeah. He's treating it up to it.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to this town to do this. Being here with the town has been an experience for me. When I first came here, my first check was $98.10. And so, when I left from the FBI for 10 years, so I told my mom, I said, "Mom, I think I did a mistake." So, she said, "Well, Isaac, you already did it now, so you may as well hang in there." So, I'm glad that I hung in there. I think I've met a lot of friends. I think Drew, because he's really hands-on for me, he's always pulling up things that I can't do. He always stepped up for me, and I really appreciate that. I think my father, Sodani, what happened out, when I told him I had stage 3 kidney disease, he offered his personal help as well. And I thank you for doing that for me. And I thank the town for all of its support. I wish my sister could be here, but she can't at this time because she has stage 4 lung cancer. So, I'm trying to do a lot of different things, and I thank the town for their contribution. I thank all the council and business and everything. Thank you so much.
Let's move into the next item, scheduled appointments, and that's Ms. Carrie Wilson. Director of County Library.
Or her proxy.
Oh, that's okay. Jackie's gonna be here instead, that's okay. And what she would be presenting is this year's One Maryland, One Book presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and she was so sorry that she could not be here tonight since I worked right up the road. It was a huge problem for me to come and talk about this year's One Maryland, One Book. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. So, what if every Marylander read the same book, the same time of year, every year, and then discussed it? What a great world that would be, because there are always really big ideas presented in the One Maryland, One Book. And the book this year is What the Eyes Don't See by Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha. She is a physician, and she works in Flint, Michigan. So, that would give you a hint of what this book is going to do now. The water crisis of 2014 could have been averted, but unfortunately, what Flint, Michigan did to save money was to avert the water source that they were using, Lake Huron, to Flint River. And therein lies the problem, because of the lead content, not only in the water, but in the pipes that transferred into cones and buildings and all over. And so, everybody in the whole world ended up knowing about the Flint Water Crisis. Oops, there's still a problem in Flint. But Dr. Mona was the young physician who was seeing her patients and seeing problems with children who were exhibiting lead poisoning. And she's the one who got the ball rolling, and that's the problem of it. It's a great read. We'll be discussing it at Twin Beachers Library on October 21, 7 to 8:30. And it's always a great discussion. If you can join us, please do. And this copy is for you.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. And here are just a little flyer, just had you about One Maryland, One Book, if you're not familiar with it. And this is about the 12th year that we've anticipated this program, and it's held. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie.
You're quite welcome.
Alright, let's move into our next scheduled appointment, which we're probably gonna have to let DB handle this. We had Dan Penison from BGB use the singer writing account route that was supposed to come here and present tonight, but I was told that he was stuck in traffic. So, we're not gonna hold up. If he shows up any other days, we will. But would you like to say a couple things?
Yeah, a couple things real quick. I just got a call about 10 minutes ago. He's trying to make a hearing. He's coming from Baltimore. Anyway, basically what it is, is they came down, we met him, he moved off office in Ocean City. And he's the new rep that starts BGB with the light, the streetlights. And what they're doing, we can use one around. They're trying to be green-friendly, you know, run and replace them all, just streetlights, traffic type lights. So, me asking if he'd like to come down to their quarter of U2, I'll turn him in. So, I should have come down. He came down, he did a walk through town. He got an account of all existing lights. And basically what it is, they can change their, no cost loss, the streetlights, two LED type lights. That helps speed, and it saves energy, saves money, but it also helps the town. Because our bill will be reduced a month ago, about $1,200 a month. I don't know if you remember, I think that's what it was.
$2,000 as well?
Yeah, $2,000 for a light. And it's no cost to the town. He did, I think it's in Chesapeake Beach, we have one around. We gave him a couple other towns at first. We did some towns in that area. They come down, they do all the work, they pay us a base, you know, we have to deal with the bill. So, the mayor wanted him to come down and follow the pace of the county's any questions. You know, they're acting something interesting. All they have to do is sign, perform the BGB has, and it's like private. And secondary to that, he also, we looked at the wooden poles, and the town still has some streets in the old wooden, uh, decked with poles. The second thing is that project will be coming in and replacing all those, you know, the LED type features, and the opposite, the light that's being used on. Could also address those, and all that. And talking to maybe fit someone out in the streetlight, and so on. Great career, if you're new, like, skiing for the streets, have those, and changing out, and those also help the difference. So, you might not like the ski, I guess, tonight. I think some of the councilmen will go ahead and protect their way, or if you'd like to sign, it could be.
The reason why I wanted to here was to go over the impact, what's going on. So, we did get some information sent in to us. I'm gonna make sure that, what I want you to do, though, is think about your questions, and let's get it to Dan, and then get all the information before, as good as the savings will be, I want to make sure I know the impact on the town. So, we will not be making a decision to do it tonight. I wanted to present the answers to you, but that's not gonna happen. So, in the meantime, let's make sure we know exactly what the impact of the new lights, the changeovers and all that will be on the town. So.
Like, most of them are all pros. A couple of the con outstanding, whatever. They had some areas where the residents, you know, it's a different type of lights, white, LEDs like a white and blue light. But what they did in some area where they removed, they do have shades, they can put on after, they put on after the different lights, residents that voted red for light, in certain directions. So, they can modify adjustments. Overall, 90% of the bottom, it's cheaper for town, it's more efficient. Those were pros, they had a different.
So, they do the consultation, and all that, which has a cost?
No cost at all to the town. It's all free, no cost at all to the town. But it puts, you know, saving them now, obviously, you know, on the BGB's, it's the best. They do less than one day for each light, and, you know, it's saving them, and because you don't have to, you just gotta stay around. From the high pressure setting, I mean, I have a lot of things that, you know, so it's saving them a long run, but that's why it's the most effective.
You just answer my question. So, it's a new management.
Right. We've got a whole spreadsheet, you know, on the lights, saving your lights.
So, we'll get all the facts, everybody, and make sure we're all on the same page, and then we can go from there. I appreciate it, David. Alright, let's go right into public safety report.
For August 2019, sheriffs offered 173 calls for service in North Beach, self-initiated with patrol checks and follow-ups. I was actually going out, starting investigations myself. Nine annual calls received by losing citizens, alarms, et cetera. And although the only ones believed were legal dumpings, trespass, and marijuana civil side. It's pretty quiet around here. Any questions on that?
Any questions from council? Alright, treasurer?
Is it okay to stand here in this?
Absolutely. We have positive vocal velocity.
Alright. For a four-year period, this July 1st to July 31st, the beginning balance was 561,000, if you jump from checking. Total debts was 676,000, and total credits was 733. Ending balance at the end of July was 504,000. Total in MLGIP jump fund reserve was 2,847,000. MLGIP sewer capital was 88,000, and MLGIP water capital was 43,000. Total cash available to the town of North Beach at the end of July was 3,484,000. Last year for the same period, it was 3,230,000. Hotel tax collected during the month of July was $996.71. There was zero business license from the state and Maryland in the month of July. For the same period last year, there was $701.52 in hotel tax, and $16.90 in business license with the state.
Any questions for Joe?
Is the game revenue from the corporate sector better than the cost?
I think we're, we're no better than we thought, because we're conservative anyway.
Alright. Ramon Q, got it?
Um, I'm on a list here. I'd like to update on the water meter project. It's pretty expensive venture to put there. While that, council approved three quarters, 763 meters. And we also contacted Val, the contractor, coming in to stall all those meters. And they were probably, to be quick, they bought a couple guys that were pretty good. Five up to seven, replacement for all the new radio-style water meters. It went pretty smooth. They were a pretty good company. They had handbags, equipment, vendors. We had a couple of questions at first, asking the leaseholder, they had a call, fixed about 15 minutes, half hour to meet here. Two guys, if you're going to be down there, all they're gonna pay out in the morning, the fees are there tomorrow. Then it'd be in burnout, so they'll be done. So, probably even half, you know. And what that does for us, it's nice, it was reading-wise, it'll all be very nice, we can drop the beat in a very short period of time, but also the new rates, and we can talk about the board rate structure, we can have active fees for every meter in town. So, then, you know, that's a cost saving, possible cost saving for residents, because we do act, reducing, is what they're dealing with. And also, we can fail into that, we can have seven teams in Carroll County, and Chesapeake Beach on the close, Fort Sittie Plant. So, now, we can do all the meters and all we can imagine. We have a way to track all the water usage if we need to. It's possibly going to use a lot of meters, and maybe should have Chesapeake Beach or Carroll County. And this is probably out of the market, and we have all the meters. So, tracking data for us is imminent. So, overall, it's probably going to be a little smooth. It should be pretty busy this. Nice to be happy, happy to be here.
A lot of you have probably already seen the door hanger, or they've knocked one or four. They're moving. And we're taking that opportunity, at that time, to look at everything around that water meter too. So, DPW's really doing a good job of this, and the contractors are doing a great job. So.
As they, they're working on, they're putting notes. The company is able to make a little backup, or, you know, with, they actually made notes for us. We were there and they could, so they did, so they did. So, we take that as where they want to go.
Any questions for Don? Thank you so much. Paul?
Just wanted to give an update on 261. Say hi, we came with a nice presentation on this, on the council, over there. Top up, they've done a good job, it's a good presentation awards for those of you who've come. I think they're on target to start this next year. So, and just to let you know that we got the final letter from them. They've based on council plans behind that, they're planning a plan, it pays $1,000 for some permanent. And you and I talked to John, just call them and they'll work with you back. So, so sorry.
Any questions for Paul? And, you know, they're all letting you know of one project or one item. We switched over to Board Docs, so community, you can see all the stuff that we have. You go to Board Docs, it's updated a couple days before our meeting, all the notes, and anything you want to see about the meeting is there. But what I'm doing is have a staff present one, because everybody has the information. So, just because they're talking about one thing, doesn't mean they're not working on 20 projects. Just want that to hold. Code, you have the report. He is not here tonight. Waterfront, is blood giving that? Or, no? Okay. Richard's out sick tonight. Dawn, would you like to, I know you're man in the camera over there.
I just wanted to mention, the town has had a lot of airtime during the summer. Started with the New Day Cleveland piece, and the Fox 5 zip trip. We had a crew from WMAR with their Midday Maryland show weeks ago, and I wanted to thank Grace Mary. She, we just kind of showed up at the museum, and she didn't expect us. And what happened was, it was a cloudy day, and they wanted to film a lot outside, but it started to rain and cloudy. So, we went to the museum, and Grace Mary did an awesome job, as usual. And then last week, we had the state of Maryland promoting their scenic pathways. So, as part of the roofs and tags, they were in town, filming for that. So, once I get all those links and stuff off the chair, so everyone can see, and they're already seen. Second thing I want to mention is, I just did an update to the town resident guide for fall, and there are some at the back table, self on our website, I posted it downstairs in the lobby. And we'll update that, resident guide a couple times a year. So, check that out for more information. And lastly, I'll just mention that we will be in Chesapeake Beach on Saturday for the day. Just want to make sure. We'll be there for the day.
Thank you so much. Any questions from Paul? Thank you so much. You're definitely, Hillary didn't pay us off today, and, I mean, you're definitely being seen out there, so we know that. Community council page, Lisa, would you like to pass on?
I just wanted to say that I survived my first summer as a staff member of North Beach. It was a very busy summer. I had no idea I was visiting the waterfront funds. And Richard and Bud and all their staff was fantastic, supporting all of my programs I was trying to do in the middle of the 9,000, so I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm doing a kickoff for my big fall program, which is the North Beach Birding Weekend. And it is on October 12th and 13th. October 12th will be an outrow at Latin General Park. And Sunday, 13th is an all-day thing called a Big Sit, where people come and you tailgate for bird watching. Where you see that Latin General Park, see how many different birds you can see. You don't have to come for the whole day, you just come to park, and it's what we do. It's easiest way to get a bird. You don't have to walk through the woods or anything. And you want to come out, Latin General Park. And staff found out that I'm really into monarch butterflies. And I, this is the time of the season, started this week, you tag the monarchs. It says, "Not the size of the tag you put on the monarch." This is what it looks like in the University of Kansas monarch watch. Over 14 million monarchs have been tagged in the past 30 years. 1.4 million just in the past 10 years. And of all those, 14,000 have been recovered on their flight to a pack down to Mexico. So, less than 1% have been recovered, but it teaches us a lot about them. And I hope, if you see me walking around grabbing the monarchs, I'm not hurting them. I'm going to be putting the tags on their wings. It's a little sticker, says monarch watch on it, and then they will fly off to Mexico. And if we're lucky, they'll come back to Maryland, and start laying their eggs, and start the whole generation to over again. So, if anybody knows any places to see monarchs, that's.
Thank you so much. We learned about this in staff meeting, and it was, like, she said, "We're gonna tag the monarchs." And we're like, "What?" And then she started telling us about the life expectancy of a monarch. And that is two months, four months, or nine months?
One month.
One month.
For most, the fourth generation, for the fourth generation, was for eight months, not the one that gets two generations.
That's a lot of work.
I also want to tell a story that just happened really quickly. Someone called today. Their mother was in a couple big passes, a Verizon event, and she's been watching one of the osprey babies, and she's very concerned because it hasn't left yet. It's been sitting out on the clock of call, we call it, fly around, and she's worried that the baby hasn't left yet. So, I called my friend, Greg Current, which is a very famous osprey researcher, and she reads 304 osprey babies with bands on their legs. In his course of 30 years, he's In his course of thirty years, he's been sixteen hundred osprey babies. And he said, it is not uncommon that the baby sits in the nest, it cries, because all we knew was that their parents would feed them. But the parents have already left to go to Venezuela, and the babies have to grow up and get ready to go. And today, later after our practice, I'm worried, it's going to be okay. Um, she's very concerned. She's been almost scared to be watching it. She's worried about it. And so, and so I wrote back to her and I talked to Greg and he said, this is what ospreys are going to get. And in fact, the Saturday, I saw four ospreys flying together right over there by Verizon on the bay. It was a rainbow. So I do really hope that she'll get, she wrote back and said she felt much better and very assured.
Thank you. A lot of great stuff happening around the beaches. All right, let's go right into public comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comment. Please state your name and address and let me hear comments in three minutes if you don't mind coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Benson, council members and neighbors. My name's Carmen Hoffman, resident of Bird Street. Only reason I'm coming is because I'd like to gain some understanding about the parking signs that are along the residential streets between Chesapeake and Bay. Specifically, the signs that say resident parking only permit required. It seems to be a bit of confusion about what it means to be a resident. There are many discussions, examples along those streets that indicate that the signs seem to infer that if you are a resident within the town limits, that you are allowed to park along those streets in front of those homes. And that presents a little bit of confusion for everyone. There are ample parking along the street for visitors. But I took about an hour to do my own parking sign in inventory along the streets from the Chesapeake and Bay from first to ninth. And there's clear to me and consistent understanding of those signs that if you live on those streets, that that's where you're supposed to park and quieten up. We had a number of residents on our street because we had business on our street. And it does create quite enough people when people come home with their children or their groceries and they can't get inside of their homes. We have people who travel to do disaster recovery. We have so many people that sort of very long, we have people who are in the north area, they can't go. And I am absolutely certain that it's not the intention of the town to have people to do not reside in those houses to park there. So as I indicated, in doing what I'm doing, the sign clearly states resident parking only permit required. However, we've got a way from the permits, and I encourage you that we reissue permits for the residents who live on those streets that do not have off-street parking. In my inventory of the parking signage, the number of houses, the off-street parking and the on-street parking, it is my opinion, the areas in order, ample of not parking along those streets for the residents as well as the visitors. So I am asking that you please reconsider issuing the parking permits that would indicate even the street, the thing that the parking permits allow for you to do more of, um, territorial, um, security and inventory, and also you'd save money as far as being able to, you don't need to worry about as much money for enforcement. And you don't have as much confusion happening with that, with the permit. So I would ask that you please reconsider the permits. And, um, and I don't think that the monuments, the signage, the signage is absolutely clear that we have more than enough parking along this residential streets. And if you take the time to do it as well, you'll know that most of those homes have off-street parking. And therefore, it's very little street parking required.
Thank, thank you so much. And we, we, I had a pleasure hanging out over at Park and talking, having this discussion. And I will tell you that we are going to be attacking the parking with the signage to come up with a better plan. And Greenwood to Atlantic, First Street over, we're gonna, you, your council members have, have stepped up. They're going to be getting involved zoning, uh, DPW, we will be looking at it. What I want to make sure is that we respond and not react with a plan that makes sense. I don't want to do something twice. Uh, so we are listening, uh, Matt talked, and, and we're going to continue to do it. But we are, will, and we will be putting a plan in place with council leadership to remedy that situation. But I truly appreciate you speaking tonight and bringing it to our attention.
It's no problem. I have inventory as well. I have, like, the, we have a location, we have the sharing.
We'll get it from our leaders every time. Thank you, Charles. Any other public comment before we move into business item? Yes, ma'am?
Um, Nancy Gagin, I've heard her fabulous. And, um, with regards to parking, uh, assuming that vehicles that expire by a common should not require on the street, and it's only what the process is, you know, different speakers, you can hear.
You can call the sheriff, but expired is not, you have to get unregistered before you can actually have them removed. Expired is not considered unregistered in St. Maryland. So we have to write, and we have to make it all how it is unregistered after a certain amount of time. Living will do something. If it's just expired, it's just, I think it's a way of taking it out. No, we can't go, we can't do anything else. Important fact on there is to approve in the air.
So step one would be, to be clear, is to reach out to Town Hall, reach out to Rick, who is our zoning administrator. Soon, in six months, we'll be unveiling a new app that you can do right from your phone. You don't need to call. You can, you can take care of that way, so documentation purposes. So step one would be call Rick, the zoning administrator. From there, he'll reach out to the sheriff's department and then from, and then they will move forward. We have that throughout the town, throughout the year, and we resolve it pretty quickly if there's a step that we can take. But please let us know.
Okay, I did talk to Rick. Well, I left one piece in the trash and the wire. We need to talk to Rick and all of this.
No, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So thank you, thank you for coming tonight. All right, let's move. Any other before we?
Mayor, can you answer the question of what does the sign mean for resident parking only?
The sign is resident parking only for any resident within the town proper, in our area. It is not assigned to that house. There is no signage to that house. It is for any resident of the town of North Beach. That's what it means for that one. Right. We're going to address all of that with that, that, that study.
You might want to include the idea of our parking by the beach with the green.
What's that?
The green parking for those beach residents. There's some residents who cannot park from the house of dinner house. There's some Atlantic Avenue, and it's the green stripe, any special dispensation. So I just want to make sure that people understand that there's a special tag for the people that are in the green area because they, they truly can't really park.
So, so what you will find is we enroll this, just like we're going to be enrolling or rolling out something tonight. There will be a massive amount of education outreach. You will know what's going on, what's going on. We're going to have input as we roll this program out. So, any other questions? All right, let's move right into business items. The first item on the, uh, the agenda is lease agreement between R and R Associates and the town of North Beach. What I need is a motion to approve my signing of the agreement between the town of North Beach and R and R Associates as presented for the parking between, uh, Bay and Chesapeake and on the south side of Fifth Street. Can we have a motion for approval for my signature? So move, can we have a second?
Second.
Second. And the discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, absolutely. What you will find is, is if you go to Board Docs, the exact lease is actually in there where you can pull it up and you can look at it. Um, every year, there has been a agreement with R and R Associates to pay for the parking. A lot of you might know is the old IGA parking lot. It's, it's a very visible and well-traveled parking lot. Our town is probably the, the main parking lot for us. The lease came up June, the end of June. R and R presented a, what they wanted as a contract. We went into negotiation and what was the final approval, approval for twelve months of one-year grant of fifty thousand dollars. What that agreement is for, it started July first, it is for one year. We will go into it as we continue to work on the parking to come up with alternative plans to continue to provide parking for our visitors and our residents that go to the waterfront. And that's what the agreement was. You can also go to Board Docs to find it, to read it, to look at it. If you're not sure about Board Docs, on the two corners of the dice, you can see how to log in. So do we have, uh, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion?
Real good question. Um, exhibit A shows the plot that we're down there. Is this thing as good as ours?
Yes, it's just, yeah, I have. Absolutely. Any discussion, any further, any questions? All right, do we have a motion? Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. So move, thank you so much. Let's move on to the next item. Well, you know what? Yeah, we added in Amy. So I tell you what, I'd like for somebody who would like to hit up that discussion about the art. So we were recently approached by a gentleman about the arts and entertainment district of establishing one in the town of North Beach. And, um, based on a lot of conversation, we want to discuss it deeper to make sure we're all aware what that means. So who would like to start that conversation?
All right. So, uh, yes, my main, main issue, uh, concern or issue is right now that, I think all the polls are put. The idea is going out there in the arts and entertainment district. And specifically, there was a request that came in this week for the mayor and or a council member to attend the Coward County zoning meeting coming up in two weeks. Um, and my concern is we haven't really discussed this from the council's perspective. We even haven't known exactly what the impacts are here, uh, what the pros and cons are related to actually getting that designation. I know there's some tax issues and things like that. So I kind of wanted to get everyone's thoughts on that before we actually set representation and zoning board if we're going to do that at a council.
Just a little bit of backstory. Um, during the last administration, we looked into pursuing, there was some interest in going after this designation, um, the benefits to it. We, we're starting to go down that road of, of the arts, a town that welcomes the arts and embraces the arts. Um, and we actually had a person from the state who ran the program come down and look, walk the town. Looked at, uh, their, you know, Sunrise Garden, right? We've got the arts there. Uh, looked at a number of things that we already have, and then we looked, we were, we gave a lot of the boxes checked. Um, we didn't have a, what they call an anchor project to be an arts designation town. And the library, she said, that, you know, that wasn't the worst. We had something like that, that's literary arts. So it's, it's all kinds of different. We have the ballet studio. We have music at the West Lawn Inn. We have arts in our, in our parks. So we already have a lot of things. And what she said was, um, they would wait to see if we were going to get the library, which that has happened. Um, and so there's, there's taxes set up, there's different benefits to it. So that, that was sort of the backstory. And we put it on the back corner and said, you know, the library piece happened. And then this just came up. So that helps Paul. That's a little bit, but we did look in the person in this administration.
Thing though, at that time was that each would be in town, right? Not turning by, uh, the rest of the guy, we knew that people, uh, brought things, worked on it just in the middle of town. And I don't know how he is on this, so he's in the devil, which I bet that all the people in the media and they're also there.
All right, it's first meeting. I don't, I don't, I'm committed to something. I think it's more about getting information. Yeah, I think it's just, uh, it's, because it is definitely a process. I mean, I think.
Well, yeah, and that's something we want to look at, like the long-term, like check marks we have to get.
And that was one of the ones, was we did have the anchor. But I, I don't, I think, um, I'm personally saying support of learning more. And I don't know, you know, to your point, Nikki, I don't know if there's a benefit or if there's momentum that can be built from the county or, you know, consequences we can leverage. But, um, I'd be interested in seeing what, you know, the county's saying and what's going on. Yeah, they're just going to learn more, you know. It's a process. You're, you need to process. So it's, I'm going to say, work in and definitely doing.
Yeah, I, I was, I was just going to say, I'm certainly, I'm looking at the, that Jason says. What we need from the town council, one, an agreement to become an arts and entertainment district. Two, naming councilperson to help assist arts council to get the project up and down in conjunction with the Coward County plan and so on. I think that's what they're going to need at some point. But I think, when I was correct, I think what we probably should do is have someone go out there and attend this to see what exactly is their planning. And because it says here, there's another meeting that's coming up too, but they want us to get in on this one. So I think we should, we need to have someone attend so we can see exactly what's going on and break that information back. And then if we need to go to the next meeting, we can go to that one too. And then we can move to these two things that we need here. I don't think we should just stick this to the side. I think we should attend.
All right. Yeah, okay, yeah. So information counted. I don't think we did a good one. We missed, so. Somebody step up this morning to attend the meeting. Yeah, just one. Whatever works. Whoever wants to do, please do. Just report back to us. Whatever you all want to do, work it out and let us know, okay? All right, let's move into the next one that I'm very excited about. We did some resolutions. We're going to move right into resolution nineteen dash seven. Creation of the Stormwater and Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. So if, obviously, if you look in your Board Docs, you will see the resolution. You have a chance to read it. What I need tonight is a motion to pass the resolution nineteen dash zero seven. And then, and then we'll move right into swearing in some of the, the, the board members, committee members.
What's the goal of this committee?
The goal is, is to get grants. They want to see a flood advisory committee. And we met with Sustainable Maryland, we met with the state, we've met with the county, we've met with everybody. Everybody wants to know about the flood committee. The flood committee was a part of the plan of Coward County. Um, we have some active residents, but the goal is to work, the residents, with Donnie Bowen, Paul Woodburn. Probably the, the group is going to grow to be able to work as a unified front to address stormwater, tidal flooding, flooding in our town. So when we go to apply for a grant, we can let them know, these are the things that we have done as a town. It's going to make us stronger to go and get that money.
So then what are you going to say is come to us as a suggestion?
Yes. Absolutely.
Not to say we're.
They're not, they're not going to, they're going to come to us. We're going to work with their knowledge. We're going to be able to apply with our grant writer Veronica. And we're networking of the state level, fed level, whatever we have to do to be able to obtain the finances to take care of our challenges.
I just sometimes.
I understand, I understand.
Feel off and divisional goal and purpose.
No, I feel very confident. The three that we're going to announce tonight, if this is approved, I, I think they're going to be very happy with. Uh, they're very excited, they're very motivated. And, um, I'm excited to see where this goes.
I'm going to just add a couple of words in there. Two things will be, we've had two meetings already and I really have a good start. Uh, the representative of the R B O D, the representative of the state came down. And she mentioned, I would thank you every time you, uh, from your parts are playing, uh, stairs and all this. I'd really, I'm sure, I'm really, who, I think she's our regional person of the state. I've really, I've seen her really, who admits she's our regional person of the state. But she was already telling us very badly, she's the manager of the committee. Really interested in what you're gonna be, what you're gonna be discussing down there. But the resident facing problems every day, they're literally sitting in the book as they're here, you know, giving them towns. Maybe this is up for a lot of building towns, sometimes their area experiences, such as projects and the good. Working from the whole of the city.
All right, so what we need is a motion to adopt. What's that?
I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna explain that it's the same as you can ask us. Because it's important environmental and we cannot fall out on the government action. That's why we need to.
And we have a big storm group, I promise you that. So what we need is to adopt Resolution 19-07, reservation of the mayor and town council of the Town of North Beach, Maryland to create the Stormwater and Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion? So move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you so much. Now, now we get to bring on our first three members. I'm excited about this. I don't believe one is, I think we're missing one. Is Gary here?
No, I think he was trying to get here, but.
All right, well, we'll do a virtual one or something. We'll figure it out. So what I would like to do is invite Jay, Lauren, and Gary. But Gary's not here, so don't worry about that. Up to the front of the dice, please, so I can swear you in. So, so, you know, we've been, we've been talking about this since, I mean, probably forever, but definitely since I got elected. And I approached these two and Gary, and we've been talking to DB and Paul. We're excited about this. We really believe it's gonna do some amazing things for our town. And we're gonna learn a lot too. So, you know, we see it. I think the advisory group is gonna bring a lot of knowledge to the table. So I cannot thank these two enough and Gary. Gary's not here, but he's the gentleman that owns that really big house in front of Ice Cream Store. So he knows about flooding right now. So raise your hand. And then I stick your name. No, you say time. Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That's right, just whatever she said. And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland. Jay, just keep going. Just keep going. Don't worry, it's hard for me, and I'm reading. And support the Constitution laws thereof. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Stormwater and Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. According to the Constitution laws of this state. Thank you so much, and I hope you're ready. Thanks a lot to volunteer, these guys are stepping up. So thank you so much. All right. Let's move right into council reports. Certainly, you can start with Mickey.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Nice crowd, I like that. About this weekend, next weekend, we'll have a final movie of the season, which will be July. It will be Jurassic World, called The Kingdom. And we have one of those, the Jurassic Park and the Imperial Radio. Or join me outside at September 12th, September 12th. And then October, we will have U-Bash, September 22nd, which is the kid costume contest. For that, we'll have the Pervert's Town, which is the dog costume contest. Why, so far, it's a good one. 22nd of December, it's October 26th. And then the movie's September 1st.
Fantastic. I've seen so many people tonight. Mayor, I just, I wanted to reiterate something you said earlier about Hillary Daley. I don't know if people totally got exactly what we were talking about. But the tourism director of Coward County shared an email with Dawn earlier today that came from the state that, you know, they looked at Coward County and the most searched items for tourism, for attractions. They had a list of four, and we were number one. We were the most searched for destination for, yeah, so above the, was it the Coward Museum?
The Brady Museum?
Brady Museum and the Lighthouse, I think, oh, four. So by, significant.
We crushed them.
Yeah, not the one.
I have a chance.
Yeah, so I just, I thought, I thought that was interesting, and thank you for sharing that. Dawn, the other thing I just want to say is I want to thank you again, Isaac, for your 30 years of service. And I'm sure everybody has an Isaac story. Just one quick anecdote I will share is Isaac met my father, who lives in California, a number of years ago. Had a brief conversation, but almost every single time that we talk and have our own conversation, he always asked me about my dad and how he's doing. And I know you have so much on your mind and things that you take care of in the town. Isaac always appreciates that, Isaac, about you. So it's a great thing to have you.
I also want to say thank you for all your service to all citizens of North Beach. Especially to many people in this state, we just really appreciate that. Especially when it's. So this week has been a busy week. Me and I'm back in the legislative committee with very many stasis. We had, I've had two meetings and then we're various forms until session starts. So I really appreciate it. But it's important to send them everything about the community after.
Just want to give a quick shout out to the North Beach volunteer fire department. So as many of you know, we have a fire down in one of the gathering, we have a multi-class. And I tell you, I happened to be down there when I was seeing what was going on. And what a response that we got, we got from the guys down there and all of our residents, not just our department. We, I know it's happened every year, it isn't a donation, it is worth absolutely every penny. With how quickly they responded, how bad that situation could have been, had it even been a little bit longer for them to get there. It really pissed off, so thank you, everyone who supports them and certain little fire fighters and the first ones.
Hello, everyone. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Isaac, you may get the retirement warrant. And thank you to everyone else for coming out.
All right, that's, just quick, thank you, Greg. I just want to pass on a couple items. You keep hearing us say the word Board Docs, Board Docs, Board Docs. You get a chance, come up, take your phone, take a picture of how to log in. As soon as they go live, the public, the council, you can see what we're talking about. You can look at the reports. It's another way that we want to make sure that our communication is making it happen to you. A couple items. First of all, we had a local resident who is usually at our meetings. She usually sits right up in the front here, here, Peter. And sadly, she had her son pass away. So just like to keep her in our prayers and so forth, totally unexpected. And, you know, we're praying that she gets through this. Tough times right now, we just keep her in our prayers. On the agenda in the back, you can look at the bottom, a lot of the events that Mickey mentioned and so forth is there. So grab that so you don't miss anything. I've had the privilege over the last 10 months as being mayor to early work hard with DBW, with Donnie and Paul and other staff members to work at Coward County. We're addressing the flooding, we're addressing the stormwater, we're addressing water and sewer, we're addressing wastewater. We have a lot that's going on right now behind, you know, as we work, that maybe you don't see, but just, Coward County's stepping up and really, you're gonna see a lot of, a lot of changes. The last, I leave tomorrow morning for a board retreat. I was voted back on the Maryland Municipal League Board. And really what that is about is me being able to network with other mayors around the state on a personal basis. So when there is a challenge in our town, i.e. parking, flooding, whatever it may be, I can reach out to the other 157 mayors on a friends basis besides just elected. So I'm excited, I'll be engaged in work for two days, networking at the board retreat. And the last thing I'd like to pass on, as a veteran myself, I had the privilege of welcoming at the NPLB, which is No Person Left Behind event, they had 40 veterans that served, combat veterans. And I was able to welcome them in to North Beach. What an amazing group. I told them, our door's open for the veterans, come back to our beaches and whatever we need to do to support them. Other than that, that's it. I cannot thank you enough for coming tonight. Love to see the chairs filled up. God bless you, Isaac. Love you. You're amazing. Keep doing good work up. And have motion to adjourn. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So move. Thank you so much.